All right, I'm gonna call the school committee business meeting for April 26, 2017, to order. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Yeah. We don't have any public comment, but we do have an acknowledgement that the superintendent will read.
So, I would like to share this letter that we received. It's dated April 6, and it was written to myself, Principal LaBelle, and Chairman Myers. As the school year is nearing an end, I felt compelled to write this letter strongly commending the Mashpee Public Schools' preschool program and its staff. We feel extremely fortunate that our son has had the opportunity this year to be enrolled in the preschool program at the Casey Coombs School. We feel equally fortunate to have had Michelle Richman as his very first teacher. I can honestly say that she has instilled what will hopefully be a lifelong love of learning. He is excited each day to go to school and has even broken down in tears on the two school days he was out sick because he didn't want to miss a thing. Ms. Richman and her teaching assistant, Ms. Gonzoovs, are engaged, creative, and enthusiastic, and they think outside the box with the interactive lessons they create for their students. I'm in awe of the schoolwork that is sent home each day. These children are learning so much and having such a fun time doing it. We also appreciate being able to get a glimpse into their daily activities on the private Twitter page Ms. Richman created just for parents. I found that looking at these photos with my son is a great way to start dialogue with him about his day and what he is learning. It can be hard to get this out of them. The other parents in the class have shared with me that they feel the same. With our son being an August baby, we were on the fence on whether he would be kindergarten-ready this coming September, but we have 100 percent confidence in this fact now. This is entirely thanks to Ms. Richman, Ms. Gonzoivs, and the Mashpee Preschool Program. Over the last seven months, our son has learned how to count to 100 and how to write his name in every letter of the alphabet. He has worked hard on strengthening his fine motor skills and has made great strides with sharing and communication. He takes enormous pride in the artwork they do in class, and painting has become his favorite pastime at home. Our son and his classmates have become part of an amazing school community that truly is connected with top-notch staff at every level. My husband and I decided to make our home in Mashpee, in part due to the availability of this program, which demonstrated to us how committed the Mashpee School District is to its students. The Mashpee Preschool Program is so vital in setting our children up for success, not just when they enter kindergarten, but for the rest of their school career. We truly appreciate this program and are so grateful that this has enriched our son's life.
Very nice letter. Next item is approval of minutes from April 5. They're in your packet.
I move to accept the minutes of April 5, 2017, as presented.
Second. Any comments? Hearing none. Scott?
Yes.
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 And yes, so unanimous. Next item is the report of the business manager.
The status of the FY '17 budget, that will be my first report, and I'm gonna kinda combine some of the questions that were asked at the last finance school committee meeting, won by the chairman, about a particular line item on the cautionate instructional equipment. You wanted to kinda get a gist of, kinda know what goes into that particular line item. The items that were in that line item were upgrades to this particular library in furniture and fixtures. There were tables and bookcases, library supplies, whiteboards, easels, rugs, and remember, this is instructional equipment and contractual services. Common choice was there. That was one of the other items. Common choices. It happened to be a training session, which is a contractual service that we use, so we did charge it to that line. iPads, stand, kidney tables, vocabulary, ELE vocabulary books for the library and so forth. There were some communication equipment bought. I'll call them walkie-talkies. I don't know what the correct term is for them, for inter-school communication, which are equipment. They're actually the handheld units. So, library upgrade. Oh, instrument repairs. We have a contractor that repairs the musical instruments in the school. That comes off that line item. Instruments that we buy as instructional equipment, and this year, I know a lot of it went to the upgrade in this particular library.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. How many walkie-talkies?
Maybe the superintendent can help me out with this. We started off with 12, and I think we purchased...
They tried to combine the older ones, which were not high-quality, with the newer ones, but it required people to have two in order to sort of relay. So, I believe that they have tried to get them all in sync with each other, and then there is a need for certain, more people to have them than in the past.
Right. And it wasn't only at this school. It was at, we had upgraded these, I believe, a year ago, or maybe two years ago. Was the first time we purchased them?
I think it was in the '15-'16 year.
Yeah, '15-'16, which would be the previous year. We did upgrade them because the ones that we were using, just, they were dead places in the school. We could not communicate. So, we did upgrade them. I can get you an exact number in each of the buildings.
Well, the only reason I bring it up, I think it was, you know, five or six years ago, I thought to buy, you know, eight or nine dozen of them. We're not talking about that many.
No, 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 no. I would say, I'll go 18 to 20.
Yeah, okay.
Something in that range. I mean, I'll get you the exact figure. And the same thing in the Coombs School.
Those around Sandy Hook, unless I remember. There was a concern about everyone having them at the time.
Yeah, no, we don't, everyone doesn't have them. That I can tell you. Key personnel have them, and I can get you an exact number.
How much do those run?
Four hundred and fifty dollars? I can get you that, too?
Per?
Per unit.
And they last, what, a couple of years?
Oh, no, no. They last longer than that. These are top-quality. These are not the ones that you would go to like a Best Buy or, you know, a Buy For Your Kids. These are heavy-duty, you know, in fact, if they break or anything happens, you know, they repair them. We don't replace them.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's not like we're replacing them every year, but this would be, this is a real good...
The distance, too, because when the bell's over here with his, we can hear it.
Yeah, I could, they're on different frequencies, so.
But you can hear it from a distance.
Okay.
All right, moving along. As you know, at this time of the year, this is when we pretty much, you know, I sit with the principals and I ask them what their balances are gonna look like and what we're looking to expend between now and the end of the year. I know the high school has some textbooks. I know they're purchasing their, in March, and it probably might not be reflected here. They did purchase some paper to get them through the rest of the year, because we just don't have the storage space. But if you go through most of the schools, you're going to see that they have expended just about all their money, except for the high school. As I said, they do have some textbooks, and that's a typical high school way of doing it. They research the book all year, and then they purchase it at the end of the year. But we budget for it in this particular, in this fiscal year. And that's done at all the high schools that I have worked with. So, as we get to the end of the year, you're going to see, again, some transfers tonight on the budget, and we still have, as you know, we made a payment earlier in January, and we will, I will not be looking to transfer that money until the next meeting. And it will not be the amount of the payout. It will be less. In other words, with the hiring, and I'll get, when I get to that particular, I might as well talk about it now. We had people that were gonna retire this year, and then they decided, we're not gonna retire this year. We're gonna retire next year. So, I have all that, I have the payouts budgeted for this year that gets put, that got pushed out to next year. So, that freed up that money, which we could expend on the salary side of the budget. So, therefore, I would, I'm not looking to transfer $225,000. You know, it'll be less than that.
But, so, the fact that you had it budgeted for this year doesn't carry forward...
Retirees. I didn't have, I didn't have the payout budgeted, because that came in after the fact, after the budget was completed.
Right.
So, that was an obligation that we were going to have to pay, and I waited, you know, to the end of the year to determine, I don't wanna transfer that over and then not use it, when we could've used it on the expense side to buy requests that the principals and the superintendent feel necessary to upgrade Chromebooks in, at the Coombs School and other items. And I'll discuss those items as we move forward. But I want you to understand that I'm kinda holding out to the last, probably in the May meeting, we'll have a real good figure on how much we're gonna transfer, but it'll be under $100,000. I can tell you right now, just on the projections. I do have some transfers. When I get to the transfers, I'll comment on those. I will entertain any questions you might have. And there's one other, again, next month, you're going to see some figures on the transportation. We did have, as you know, when I wrote the agreement between the Collaborative and the Mashpee Public Schools, that I had put in there a fuel escalation clause, which means that it's not as much as it was last year because we adjusted it so that we didn't budget as much this year for the fuel as we had in the past. About four years ago, the fuel, believe it or not, diesel was up about $4.50, and that's what we had, and that was based on the AAA Southern projections on diesel. So, that's what we, that's what I had put into the agreement. Well, diesel came down. It's now, this past year, and we still get, we're still on, we're still getting credits against, and we, I budgeted it at $2.50 a gallon. And that's what the, that was the estimate that the DPW director had come out with, saying that all of the departments, fire, police, and so forth. That should be, that's the figure you should put in as your budget for your fuel. So, what I did in the projections for our transportation, I brought that down to $2.50. It's even less, it's still less than that. It's getting close, but we still get, you know, small. So, I'm gonna be able to free up some transportation money, too, and I'll discuss that at the next meeting.
So, for FY '18, you budgeted based upon what the DPW told you the fuel costs would be?
What they feel they're gonna pay for, what they're going to pay for diesel, correct? All the big buses are diesel. Now, you may see diesel higher than $2.50, but remember, we don't pay state tax on that.
Right.
So, and, but even though they're run by the Collaborative, the Collaborative has a card that they don't, they do not pay. So...
Okay.
So, we're, you know, it fluctuates. I'm not saying it doesn't fluctuate, but, you know, I feel, I think, you know, it's somewhat stable now compared to four or five years ago.
Well, as they, as I understand it, they're filling up at the DPW. Is that correct?
No.
They're not?
No, no. They'll fill up. We found that it would be just as, it's easier for them to fill up. I can get you the name, the stations that they fill up in. But they have a card that takes the tax off, so. And naturally, the drivers don't.
Okay. Well, that answers a question that I was gonna ask in regard to, you know, what happens if the cost is higher than what is budgeted, if, you know, the DPW is responsible for that or we're responsible for, but since we're not buying it from the DPW...
Right, no.
I clearly see that we're responsible for it, so.
Yeah, we would be, even if we bought it from the DPW, we would be responsible for it.
They'd be charging us back, right?
The activity van, the van that we use to go from school to school, into office, we get charged for all the fuel.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a brief question on that, and I'm glad that you'd set up the contracts the way you did, but it's an interesting point about where they fill up. For example, if they filled up near the Collaborative, the, I'm not gonna name the station, but on Main Street, it's about $2.75.
Yeah, we have not paid $2.75 for fuel at all.
But in Mashpee, it's about $2.45.
Yeah, and then you take it down. I can, you know...
But do they fill in Mashpee, do you know?
I have some of the buses that are local.
Yeah, they do.
Because the bus is parked in Mashpee.
They're parked in Mashpee, so they, yeah, they usually fill up.
The one on 151, where that mini-motor is.
Okay, 253.
Thank you. Yeah, 253.
That's right.
But it's still less.
Right.
When I get my reports, and I get a report of every bus...
It fluctuates. It goes to 248.
Yeah, but I get a report on every bus, the amount of fuel they burn, and that's how they, and they back, that's how they back up their...
That's right. They're parked in the high school. That's right.
Credits, yeah. Yeah, no, they wouldn't give out. I know.
It's expected, once.
All right, I will entertain questions on this before I move on.
Is the cautionate nurse out sick?
Pardon me?
Cautionate nurse out sick?
Well, that's, I don't know whether I, I'll try to do the best, but I'm gonna ask the superintendent to jump in at any time. We have a nurse that has been out, yes, and we have, basically, we have a, I would say, a long-term sub in there, and I know the committee had asked me to do research on the subs, and when I get into that, I'll, I can talk about that. But right now, we're only paying one person in there currently in that position, if you'd like to.
There were some challenges in that position, and in order to provide coverage and stability for this building, we brought on a long-term sub. She's still in the district. She supports in the other buildings as well, and also here, if there are any further challenges as we finish out the year.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman, I got a question. I'm not sure if we discussed this in the past, but if you could just refresh my memory on whatever with the network administrator. Did we hire somebody else under that? Or I mean, it's...
No, that got, and we kinda left it, what page is that? I'm sorry.
Page 16, 21 up the top, recall.
21 on the top, that's good. If you notice down the bottom, the network support, you see how that has a balance of $188,000?
Yes.
And the $120,000, that's offsetting it.
Okay.
That'll eventually offset it. We just moved a person up there, but we didn't move the money, because, as I told you, we can, we can kinda do things right up to June 30, but once we hit that button, I can't, I can't move the funds.
Yep.
You know what I'm, so I leave the salaries alone.
Just wanted to clarify, especially if anybody sees that.
That's what it is. That's why the balance is there, yep.
Thank you.
I've got one, Mr. Chairman. McKinney Vento, waiting for...
McKinney Vento, yep.
We're waiting on that.
I got my McKinney Vento expert sitting right next to me.
Everyone's got one.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. I was out for a day, and she told me I got two more.
Page 6, page 9, printed 9, pencil 14.
Oh, pencil 14. Sorry about that. McKinney Vento is gonna go over again this year. We do, the reason why it's in a negative, in a minus there, is because if you look at the encumbered amount, most of our McKinney Vento is transported by the Cape Cod Collaborative. And that 9311 is a purchase order that we encumbered money at the beginning of the year for our McKinney Vento, assuming that they were gonna do it all. But my McKinney Vento expert right here kinda searches around, and a lot of times, she can hook up with another school district that has a kid going in the, Falmouth mostly, going in the same way, the same direction. So, that 1662 is usually those other transportation people that transport on McKinney Vento. Now, I don't know whether we'll use all of the Collaborative, so we will free, we'll take a look at that next month, and we may be able to, you know, make, correct that. But if we can't correct it, and we're gonna spend the 9311 plus the 1662 plus maybe another $1,000, I can't tell you right now, because it's almost like on a daily basis, we get these McKinney Vento kids. I'll have to transfer money from the sped transportation, and I'm working on that now. That's why I say, a lot of these encumbrances may, you can see up above that in the sped transportation, the $18,000, $986, I could've transferred, but I wanted to wait really till the last gun is fired to make that transfer to close that account out. But there is a balance, if you notice, in the transportation, there is a balance of $30,194 at the bottom there. Okay? So, in another, just another point, since we're on transportation, in the regular-day transportation, again, just as I had just stated, because of credits that we get, because of runs that we didn't use this year, we'll be able to possibly unencumber some of that money, too, to be used other places next month.
Yeah, we're fortunate, because a lot of schools have a very difficult time with that. And like you said, it usually gets down to as close to even as possible at the end of the school year. But, you know, there's several years ago where there wasn't any ride-sharing, but I wanna thank everyone for working hard on that because...
Thank Mrs. Lico for doing that, because she gets those, she searches around, finds out if someone's heading that way. The Collaborative is trying to, Collaborative is trying to do that, but we're one of the few districts that have the Collaborative do all of our sped transportation, and a lot of, a good portion of our McKinney Vento transportation where other school districts like Dennisham and Sandwich, Montemoy, they have their own vehicles. And what they do is, they use those vehicles to do their long runs, like their RADA districts, and then they, or they pick and choose the Collaborative, you know, like I might have a, someone going to a certain school, and, you know, they'll say, oh, well, there's, you know, we got Mashpee going there, so they get to hop on. We save money, but they save money, but, you know, they kinda cherry-pick where they wanna go. And the Collaborative is trying to get everyone to do away with that and let them run the whole transportation, so we all get a good, kind of the action there, you know. The more kids you put on a van going to a certain area, the more money you're gonna save.
Thank you.
On page 17, can you just briefly explain what's going on in regard to instructional wages? On page 17 of the packet?
Oh, page 12.
Oh, that's an error. That is definitely an error.
Okay.
I'll correct that next month, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for that. I know I hit, I, it's, I hit too many sixes there. I can tell you right away.
All right, well.
I will correct that.
Good catch.
Thank you. That's a good catch, and this is, you know, stump the business manager on.
So, I guess I'm trying to figure out then, because that carries forward to page 5 of the handwritten, which is the summary, just where we are.
Again, I'd have to make that correction.
Can you update that and send it out to members?
Absolutely, absolutely. I'll get that out first thing tomorrow morning. And I, again, I apologize for that. I guess I was in the vacation mode.
My last, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I lost a page, but it was athletic, oh, here it is, athletic other.
Okay, give me the page.
Are you page 15? Page 10? Printed page 10?
Yep, got it.
I think there's, and then the supply is also athletic.
Was it the printed page?
Page 15 printed. I mean, I'm sorry.
10 printed.
10 printed. 15 in pencil. I got it, I got it, I got it. Okay, question? Go ahead.
There's two of these, athletic supplies and athletic other.
Right, and there'll be a transfer to cover that.
Okay, good.
Yep. That'll be in my transfer. As you know, in athletics, when I presented the budget, we take the total cost of athletics and we offset it by what they feel they're going to bring in on revenue, which I believe was $20,000 or $25,000 this year. I don't have the '18 budget. So, the way you handle that particular revolving account is you spend down everything that is in the appropriation and then move over into the revolving account.
It seems we have a good amount left under officials. Is that...
Yeah, but we still, you know, we still got, you know...
Many sports going on.
It's kind of, it's kind of behind, so much, you know, in April, we haven't hit yet. But that's where we'll be transferring money. We made out very, very well with transportation this year, because the activity of the van that we leased from the Collaborative allows us to take the smaller teams, such as tennis, golf, without hiring a big bus. So, you know, it's just the cost of fuel and the lease of the van. We have completed one year with the van. It's a three-year lease, and after that, we own it. And after that, it would just be insurance and fuel. And, you know, I feel, as I said before, I feel those vans have between seven and nine years of life, minimum, in that area.
So, at the May meeting, you think you'll have a better handle in regard to where you think, from a projection standpoint?
Absolutely, absolutely. And at that May meeting, I would probably be making those, you know, the big, what if you wanna call it, the big, the transfer from expenses to salary.
Okay, to clean that all up.
Yeah, we will, we're right on topic of that. And I'll discuss that more when we get into the substitutes, as requested by the school committee, a projection on substitutes, and I'll get into that discussion when that time comes in.
Okay, any other questions?
Any other questions?
Nope.
Okay, moving right along into the status of grants and revolving accounts. Grants on, are on page 27. Again, you can see total received, total expenditures. We request them once a month. The state keeps changing their format, but we're all, if there's any questions on those federal grants. There are three grants that we can, they're called tiding grants, that we can carry over up to 27 months. That's Title I, Title II-A, and 94142, project IDEA, project adjust, or no change. That's Title I, Title II-A, and 94142, project IDEA, Project Adjust, No Child Left Behind. Those can go for 27 months. I'll be sitting with the superintendent this next month, determining if we will carry any funds forward, and I can report on that in the May. I personally, I have a personal, I like to expend them down in the year that we have them, but a lot of times you can't, so the federal government, what we used to have to do, I'm dating myself now, we used to have to turn that money back to the state who turned it back to the federal government. Well, it became a, they didn't, no one liked doing, the federal government didn't want it back, the state didn't want it back, so what they've done is they've come up with this tidings that you can carry it over 27 months, those three particular grants. There's one other one, but we don't get it, I think it's Title III or IV, might be Title IV, that can be carried forward, but we don't, we don't get that grant. So, we can make some decisions whether we want to carry funds forward. These grants, the federal grants that I just talked about, they run through to August. So, what I have to do is tell the state what I need for funds for July and August, and then September will be the carryover piece.
What's going, Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Indian Ed, is that just some bills that haven't come in, or is that salaries that haven't been paid yet, or N630, is that a carryover? No, it doesn't carry over.
No, that doesn't carry over. That is not a carryover grant. They do spend a lot of their, a lot of their activities are done at the end of the year. They do a graduation thing, they have a dance, they have some, I don't want to call it anything. Yeah, is, I don't want to entertain it, but it's to do with their heritage, so they do have a lot of things at the end of the year.
Cultural events, yeah.
Cultural events, thank you.
There was also a miscalculation in the way that the coordinator slash one of the tutors was being paid, and we did an audit to double check that, so we have rectified that for the balance going forward, so it should catch itself up. It was not recording enough hours for --
So, there's a follow-up, so there's two persons under that grant and salary, right?
There's a coordinator.
There's a coordinator that also, so she has a coordinator stipend, which is part of salary now, and then she serves as sort of a tutor, and then we have three tutors.
I see.
Two are school day at the elementary level and one is an after-school, one at the high school, who work on an hourly basis.
Thank you.
Any other questions on grants?
I guess I had one more.
Okay, go ahead.
The anti-addiction, it seems to be blank.
Yeah, that was a grant that I probably should have deleted it, but I left it there for George's --
Edification.
Yeah, that the governor did cut that grant, as you know, George. And I did leave it there. We were expecting to get some funds from that.
It was supposed to be $15,000.
$15,000.
We did submit it.
Yep.
In a tight timeline.
Yep, and we didn't get it, so that's, I just leave it there.
Hoping it comes back.
It's not going to come back. Don't bet on it.
Well, write a letter.
The revolving account, any questions, I'm sorry, on the grants? The revolving fund, there were no changes. I will tell you that the school choice on 4/24, you'll notice that's the date that I did these, will not tie out with your, with your school choice because we got an additional payment that was posted, and there were a couple of small items that were, that were purchased. So, the current balance is $645,188, and I verified that today. And part of it is the, I did check, and part of it is that we did get another payment, which was the March payment, which was posted after I had done the school choice expenditures. But there are no changes, as you know, there are no revenue sports, community school, that's our summer school, preschool is pretty, just minor, you can see there was no change. Oh, you're going to see a change in the non-resident next month, but I'll address that next month in the tuition. It'll be an increase. Questions?
At the end of the year, for that non-resident tuition, will that be zeroed out?
No.
Why not? Why wouldn't it be moved against the salary line?
Against the --
Or instructional?
No, it's not zeroed out, it's a revolving account. It's to be expended at the high school, because that was where the money was generated. You're going to see an increase in that line of about $3,900 next month because of the Chinese students that we hosted.
Right.
We receive revenue for hosting those students, and that would go into that particular revolving account without further appropriation from the town, to be expended at the, you know, as any other revolving account at the high school, because that's where the money was generated.
So, what happens if we have a non-resident at caution?
That it goes to the caution account, I set up an account for the caution account. I can set them up within that account too, you know, I can have separate orgs in there. I probably would set up a separate one. In other words, if the Chinese students come here and --
No, I get it, I guess I'm just trying to mentally think about the logic of, we're charging them tuition based upon some assessment of student costs during the current period, and that we're not, we're applying it potentially different, in a different manner.
No.
Because it's in a revolving account.
No, no. The way, the way that it is determined, what we can charge under the federal laws is that we can charge them, basically, we take the per pupil expenditure, and the federal government watches this closely on these people that come in on visas. You take the per pupil expenditure, which is from the Department of Education, and you deduct any federal and state funds. Well, we have state funds, which is Chapter 70, so you take the Chapter 70, divide it by the October 1st report, find out what the per pupil expenditure is for the Chapter 70 money, and you reduce that down. So, let's say at the time when that student came in, and again, I don't have the exact figures in front of me, but I can give you estimates, let's say the per pupil expenditure was $14,000 and the Chapter 70 was $2,000, we were able to charge that person $12,000 tuition.
Right.
Now, the federal government is watching this because they don't want to see someone charging a tuition of $2,300. They're saying, "Well, wait a minute, that's not a true figure." I don't, you know, no matter where you are in the United States, you know, it's not, you know, it's not that low. Now, in Florida, they do it by county, so, I mean, it's the county, it's the amount that the county appropriates for education. That's what you can charge.
Right, which I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, so --
My question is, then, how does a district expend those funds?
How does a district expend the funds? The district can expend the funds on anything to do with the high school, because it's supposed to supplement that particular person, it's just like choice.
Okay.
It's a supplement. So, the principal has expended some of it on supplies, it was like $12,000, it's down to four. And then I just, we just got the check yesterday, Monday.
We didn't charge, that was just the company.
The company gave us the check, yeah.
Providing the high school with that. We didn't say we're charging you.
Okay, so we didn't actually charge them, they provided that as a gratuity?
No.
Yes, it was, and then the families also received a stipend similar to that for hosting.
Oh, from the companies.
Because that was a different company that happened. So, it was 15 times 250.
And I, I've cleared it with town hall and we've set up, we set that, basically what we did is we kept them both on, in the same account, but separate lines, so that we know that this came in.
Okay, I got it.
Other questions? I still will report on that next month, though. There are a number of transfers, some of them are just to take care of the deficits, the other ones are, the first one I'd like to talk about is the tuition membership collaborative, the $80,000. And if you go down, I'll tell you where that's being transferred to, you can see it, it's the first, number one at the top of the page, it's going down 56,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 to classroom instructional materials, 56,000 for system-wide instructional hardware, and 19,000 for information management technology, which is kind of some of the infrastructure that is needed. It's basically software and, let me see, technical services and software. The instructional hardware are basically Chromebooks, three carts for the Coombs School, that's part of it, and the other one is software for those particular items. Now, going back to the line, the 80,000 at the top of the page, that's, that's funds that we project that we're going to send students out to out-of-district placements, in this particular case, to the collaborative. We were able to keep these students, these high-risk students, in the school district, so that is, at this time of the year, we were able to free that up and move it to purchase items for the schools.
Paul, I thought as of last year that we had purchased enough Chromebooks for all of the students. Is this replacements?
Some of it is, some of it, we, some of the ones we replace, we replace with the insurance money, if there's a few. In this case, this is, I believe Sean told me, this is for the incoming sixth or seventh grade, plus there were three carts, and this is only part of it. There were three carts going to the Coombs School, and I'll let the superintendent --
So, currently, the second-grade teachers are the upstairs of Coombs, shares those three carts, and they had asked, when I met with them, to go to one cart for each, for two rooms, because the scheduling of it, and you start working and someone else wants it in an hour and you can't get it done, so that was addressing the request of the teachers to share one cart between two classrooms. So, I think it was 12 classrooms currently sharing three, and we were getting three more carts, so they would share six to share, so it's one cart for two classrooms.
And we'd been sharing for almost three years, right, in that range?
Well, that's real, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's relatively newer over there, they were the last group to sort of get them, but they are using them quite a bit.
They haven't had them for three years. This is kind of a new thing, you know.
I remember, yeah.
We kind of started at the top and kind of moved down, and they were the last ones. And, you know, at this time of the year, I'll be honest with you, Mr. Chairman, I asked the principals, if we have the money, I ask them, you know, if you want, and the teachers, I shouldn't say just the principals, the teachers, you know, what would you like to see? And this was one, this was one of the big things that the superintendent came to me and she said, "Can we do this?" And I said, "If you feel that it's something that they want, then we have this at the, and we do this at the administrative meeting." If we work hard, I look at it this, I don't want to say we, if the teachers and the principals work hard to keep programs within our school, we still have to project the high-risk kid that's going to go out of district, because I'm not going to get caught coming back to the town saying, "Oh, I didn't expect this, this particular student to go out of district and I need more money." So, if, on those high-risk students, if we keep them in here and we have available funds to service all the students, I, you know, as a business administrator for many years, I don't have a problem with that. Otherwise, it would go back to the town.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Okay, yeah.
I was just, it was my impression that we had reached the point where we had purchased Chromebooks for all of the students. I did not realize that we were sharing and continue to share KC Coombs.
Yeah, just, that's, that's the only school we share, is that correct?
Three through 12 is one.
Yeah, yeah.
Three through 12.
Yeah, we, that was our goal, and then, then we started to share at the Coombs and then now, you know, we're fortunate enough to be able to purchase those.
Okay, so, so now we're at two to one, and then maybe ultimately we can get to one to one.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you for explaining that.
The, the other ones are just the instructional software, the athletic Scott brought up earlier, that's just to take care of deficits. You'll notice a $25,000 system, system-wide professional development, transfer down to $25,000 in legal services, and that is for the, that reflects the deductibles for the insurance on two of the legal cases that we had. In other words, the town has a $7,500 deductible, and then the insurance company takes over any claims against those, without getting into the insurance claims. And the rest is just, you know, general cleanup, the deficits.
Do you have a motion?
Move to accept transfer 17 and 17 as presented.
Second.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing that, Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Moving on, school choice expenditures, FY17, you have in front of you the, and I had mentioned that we had a couple of, that's why the figure doesn't tie out, it shows 615 here, and I believe that on the revolving, I had 645,188. So, there's, there was a small payment there in the March revenues.
Mr. Chairman, Paul, there's a few negatives, can you explain those negatives?
Yep, let's say something comes in, we get billed for it.
We don't like it.
Those are, yeah, not necessarily, it could, it could not, it could be something that Sean Maroney didn't want.
Yep.
And it gets sent back, and those are the credits that you see there, like that $989 hub technical, but when you look up above what we're paying them, so he, something might have gotten chipped, or, you know, the bill got charged for services that they didn't, and they credit us.
And so, one more, Mr. Chairman, this is 102116, AUK is 52531, touchscreen?
Yeah, those are the --
Those things?
Yeah.
Just so we know what we're paying on those things.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You're going to see more of those, probably.
Hopefully, used ones, maybe?
No, they're not used, there's no used ones.
Refurbished?
No refurbished, no, can't help you there. No refurbished, no, can't help you there. I think we do pretty good on those, cost-wise.
Yeah, I think, I think we are. How, how far are we towards the replacement of all of the old boards?
I'd have to, I'd have to get you that, because that's by school.
Okay.
Make the progress, though.
Want to know how far, how far we've come and how far we still have to go?
Well, I, I think we're approaching it a little different, too, because I know there's some, some of them are on stands, some of them are on tables, you know, I don't get out of the office as much as I probably should.
I guess, I guess I have another one.
I know, there's some, some old ones.
Are we finished with Falcon Cafe, or are we?
I'll, I'll check on that, I mean, that's a good question.
I would like to know how many more bills come in.
I'll check.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does it look like we've had any?
Are there any other questions?
Yeah, I've got six fifteen balance.
Oh, yes.
Some three hundred of that is already committed for the FY eighteen.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Correct, and I, and I, and I'm watching that.
Okay.
Because there'll be, at, at the discretion, you know, as we present things to you, there'll be questions about, and a couple of things on the other that I'll discuss, you know, whether we do these things, you know, so, but, yeah, I'm committing three fifty. But remember, it's three fifty generated this year, paid out next year, so whatever's generated next year gets paid out if we need to.
Yeah, we probably will need to.
Yeah, okay, so.
Not probably, I'll believe probably.
Okay, so, so I'll put that in my book, I'll book that.
I would likely.
Okay. Any other questions on the choice?
Millions down to three hundred.
Going quickly.
The chairman and the school committee asked me to go out and get prices on auditing firms for the end-of-the-year report. I would like to thank Catherine Lico for calling these people and getting these emails. Clifton Larson was the low figure of five thousand dollars. Powers and Sullivan was next at fifty-five hundred. Lynch, Malloy, and Marini was fifty-nine fifty, that's who we currently use, and Melanson and Heath was seventy-five hundred dollars. I have no problem going with Clifton, Larson, and Allen. This is the accounting firm that also audits the town, so it makes it very, very convenient for them, for them to come up. I work with the auditors anyway, so I know who's going to do the end of the year. Mike's going to do the end-of-the-year audit, and, because he comes up and audits school lunch, all the federal, federal accounts.
Do you need a motion to accept that?
If you want, yeah, you could, you could, because we did go out and research this, so maybe a motion to go with Clifton Larson, if you don't mind.
So moved?
Second.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing on, Scott?
Yes, yes.
Anything else? Thank you for doing that.
Thank you, Mrs. Lico, for doing that, as usual, covering my back here.
Is there anything you don't do?
Yeah, that's it. The other thing that the, the committee asked me to research was, I'll project what the substitutes would be from, I did it from, actually, March, and I can comment on that. The figures are from March to the end of the year. What I did is I took FY sixteen, and you can see we level-funded substitutes, and substitutes, you try to do, you try to go back over a number of years and determine what you expended and try to come up with a figure that's reasonable, and what you think you're going to need to get you through the year. So, we level-funded it because in FY seventeen, and I believe we leveled it, level-funded it moving forward into eighteen. In FY sixteen, I'll talk about FY sixteen, and maybe the flow isn't that good on this. The, the balance, now, this is as of March thirty-first, two thousand and sixteen. If you follow, this is FY sixteen, we had a balance of a hundred and twenty-four, one fifty-four. At the end of the year, amount used from three thirty-one to the end of the year, the balance was, at the end of the year, twenty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars. So, of the two hundred and eighty-nine, seven twenty-one, we had twenty-four thousand left off. The amount used from three thirty-one to the end of the year was ninety-nine thousand, five hundred, fifty-six dollars. So the current, last year, long-term substitutes were thirty thousand, thirty thousand, six fifty-seven, so the day-to-day was sixty-eight, eight ninety-nine, from March to, to June. Now we come to FY seventeen, budgeted the same amount, expenditures to three thirty-one. You can see, last, in expenditures, were a hundred and sixty-five thousand, five sixty-seven last year, we're at two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight oh eight this year. So that means we have a balance left of seventy-five thousand, nine hundred, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. I'm estimating that there is going to be nothing left at the end of the year. So we're going to expend the total seventy-five thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars. The current long-term substitutes that are out there are going to cost twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and nineteen dollars. The day-to-day substitutes, I'm estimating at seventy-seven, eight hundred dollars, based on what we have expended this year. So my projection is thirty thousand, a shortfall of thirty thousand, one oh six. So I took, we just did a payroll and, this week, so I took, I got another, I got an up-to-date figure. We have expended, now, you see up there, two hundred and thirteen thousand, eight oh eight, we have expended to the, to the month of April, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight sixty-three. So, we actually have sixty thousand, eight fifty-one, moving forward for May and June. So, I'm sorry, that was up until, the two twenty-eight, eight sixty-three was up to the payroll of four fourteen seventeen. So the two twenty, two twenty-eight, eight sixty-three, and the two thirteen, eight oh eight, so in that one payroll, the substitutes, we spent fifteen thousand, fifty-five dollars. We have one more payroll in April than two in May and two in June. So if I take the fifteen oh five five, times five, that's seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars. I had estimated, we have a balance of sixty thousand, eight fifty-one, it comes out to be about fourteen thousand, four twenty-four, shortfall, I'm estimating thirty thousand, one oh six. It could be, it could be somewhere in between there. Being conservative, I'm presenting you with the thirty thousand, one oh six, so that I don't get caught in June saying, trying to figure out how to explain to you why it went thirty instead of fourteen. So it could, you know, it's a fluctuation, I, the thing that drove that this year, we had unexpected long-term subs, we have workman's comp cases right now, I believe we have, one might be back, we have three, I know we have two, we have two left, we had three. We had some very long-term, legitimate, long-term health issues that drove that. We had a number of pregnancies at, I believe, the high school, and, you know, we do have a sick bank, which people look at it, that it doesn't affect the budget, but it is an unfunded liability, and it does affect the budget. If they're granted sick days, that means that we not only have to pay the personnel, but we still have to pay the sub. And, so, it, it'll fall somewhere between, my projection, between fifteen thousand and thirty thousand dollars, shortfall, which we will cover.
You know, tell us at the next meeting where you think you'll be coming up with that.
Absolutely, that will be one of the projections, moving out to the end of the year. I'll have a, you know, when you get to the end of the, end of May, you've got a pretty good projection on where you're going to be, even on the subs, we'll be, we, we track those every payroll.
Yeah.
Not at the beginning of the year, but as we get into the year, you kind of track that to make sure that, you know, where you are with that. And, let me see, I just have a couple of items that maybe, we may be talking about, we can talk about, one of them, one of the things that was brought up in negotiations, and I know Chris has been in negotiations and Dawn, were the inside rooms at the high school, that have no windows and very little ventilation. So, one of the things is, I was directed by the superintendent to kind of get a cost of what it would take to put air conditioning in those rooms and how it would have to be. Not being an expert in air conditioning, I passed that off to Brad Tripp, Director of Facilities, and he brought in people to give a, kind of a rough estimate. I don't have a concrete price, but I did tell him to move forward in getting a concrete price for three rooms, the two.
Two of them are currently science labs that open into the Hall of Flags, there's no windows there. And then the third room is down, it kind of combines with a special education suite, has absolutely no windows, not even looking into the Hall of Flags. So it's, it's, it's really an unhealthy working and learning environment.
And, you know, we came, we tried to come up with ideas, can we tee off of this, or tee off of that, you can't do it. We brought in the experts, you can't do it, so it's got to be done. And the three rooms, and I'm giving kind of my projection, because Brad Tripp gave me his, between, for two rooms was between fifteen and twenty, so I'm going to say between twenty and twenty-five for three rooms, to air condition and ventilate those particular So, so that's, so that's where we, you know, I have, I have asked him to go and get a firm estimate on doing those rooms, and we, you know, we'll determine whether we can fund it, but I don't want it done, I'd like to do it out of this fiscal year, and I will report back to the school committee where the funds came from. I kind of pushed it, as the superintendent will back me up on, I kind of pushed it on the fast track, because I don't feel we need it for December, we're going to need it for May and June. So, he's going to have them out next week, and I said I would even be willing to, you know, within, within reason, do it on a, not to exceed a certain amount of money also, you know, just to get, get it in the fast track. Again, it's not my area of expertise, but that is the estimate, and I feel we can do it, and I think, you know, when I was in Sudbury, I did build a lot of buildings, and any inside rooms we air-conditioned and ventilated to make sure there was fresh air and cool air in there, because it's just not healthy for the student or the teacher. I will report back.
You, Chris, from Chris?
Yeah, actually, Paul, a comment, any question? So if it's common practice for what it sounds like to ventilate and air-condition inside rooms, at least whoever can, and as long as the parties involved agree that it's an unhealthy learning environment, which I would also agree.
Yep.
Has there been discussion as to why this would fall on the schools to pay for, and I know we've been down this road before with many other things.
I know, I know, you know, and, you know, I feel that this is, sometimes.
I'm sure you knew that was coming.
Yeah, I did, I did, I absolutely did. I said, this is the time that the businessman get beat up because he found some money out of, you know, many, many little accounts, you know, a thousand left over in this account, a thousand left over in this account, putting them all together, high school accounts might have some, you know, people, you know, professional development that we, we didn't use or we didn't bring in speakers, and, you know, I, I put in a lot of thought over this, and, you know, I would, it would be nice to say, okay, if we, we didn't need to expend this money in, with books and professional development and other things, and we turned it back, would the town put the air conditioning in the, in that, in those rooms? But they're so tight, you know, when you talk to the DPW, they're so tight on their side, so I just feel, you know, somebody's going to make a decision. I don't mean, you know, I have no problem being the bad guy and, and getting beat up for it, you know, but, all I can, you know, you said, the statement that you made was, if, if inside rooms should be ventilated and air-conditioned, why, you're kind of going down the road, why wasn't it done when the building was built?
Well, more or less, going down the road of, granted, if we are the only route to do it, I agree, let's do it. We're going down the route where, in the past few months to a year or so, we've been asked to put the bill for a lot of reasons.
I, I, I understand that.
I just want to make sure of that.
I understand that, but on the same token, that it's all coming out of, I look at, it's all coming out of the same pot, and that if we can do something to, you know, make our schools better, and I'm going to be talking, I'm going to get into something else in just a minute, that, that, you know, I, I hope everybody, you know, can stay awake for this because it's a big number, that, that, you know, somebody has to make the decision and say, you know, do we, do we do this, or do we put the air conditioning in, get it done, and let's move on? So I've kind of put it on the fast track, I, I'd be more than happy to keep the committee apprised of it as we move forward, you know, they'll get somebody out there next week, when they can do it, that's another thing, but, you know.
So just a couple of questions, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
So, this is a quote-unquote permanent solution versus a temporary solution?
Absolutely. Anything that we put forward here, I'll work with Catherine and Brad, and it's a permanent solution, we're not, we're not, you know, and I'm going to get into the next thing, and that's going to be something that's going to be permanent, too.
Okay.
But, yeah, we're not going to jerry-rig something, as they say, to get by. This is going to be done right, and it's going to last.
All right, and so, when you say it's going to be done right, then it's going to be done such that in the future it could be expanded or incorporated?
Again, that's not my area of expertise. I can get those answers for you, but I doubt that it can be expanded. One of the things that they said about those classrooms, about teeing off other air conditioning, is the rooms were too big. See, when these engineers or air conditioning experts come in, they do it per square foot, whether it's your house or whatever, so, and I haven't, you know, Brad Tripp, the Director of Facilities, said he's going to have them over there, he's had them in, get a rough estimate, going to get a more firm estimate, I'll get it out to you people, I'll email it out to you, what it is as soon as I get any information. So, what I'll do is I'll keep you up to date on what's taking place on this, and what it's going to cost.
All right, so it sounds like more, more to come.
This is just a preliminary, but I, you know, again, I'm trying to put, as the superintendent knows, I'm trying to put this on a fast track, I don't need, we don't need it in December, we need it in May and June, so, we'll see how.
So, your thought is to try to get it installed for this May?
Absolutely. While we're coming into May now. While we're coming into May now, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. You know, I don't know what entails, I said to Brad Tripp, I'd be willing to meet with the air conditioning engineer or whatever and discuss how fast we can get it in, and of course, you know, Brad emailed me back saying, well, he doesn't know what this particular person has for work, but there are other people on the Cape, I mean, if he can't do it, there are other, he's not the only air conditioning guy, so. Further, more details to come, I'll keep you informed.
I've got a follow-up.
Go ahead.
So, this is a condenser as compared to a ductless, this is a stationary condenser?
I haven't, I haven't seen the...
I would assume, you know, yeah.
It's gonna do each room.
And the ductless, which you see like they retrofit some of the restaurants with, was not an option once the first person came in to give Brad some information. Did not work for either room, but they're gonna try to tie whatever's in the two adjoining rooms somehow together with...
Yeah, with one, one. Because they can size that compressor and air handle, the handle, if they're next to one another.
Yeah, those two are next to each other.
That's three rooms, right?
Yeah.
The third one is not next to the other two.
It's not next, so that would be a separate.
Two condensers in this case?
Yeah, yeah.
But the third room is downstairs.
No, they're all upstairs.
Oh, they're all upstairs? Okay. All right.
Okay, just to, one of the items that, other items that the superintendent, we've been looking into, is upgrading the auditorium for lighting and sound. It's in its preliminary stages, I have got estimates that range from fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. So, this is not going to take place in the next couple of months, so this will be something that'll be ongoing. And again, this is not my area of expertise, we will be discussing this with the DPW, and we do have some vendors that are interested in doing it, but now what we have to find out is, do we hire an engineer to actually design and check, you know, so I can write up some specs or get some specs written and put it out to bid? So, we're kind of at the beginning of that, but again, that is gonna be, you know, I feel that the fifty thousand dollar item is coming in with the bare minimum, and I don't wanna just do, I'd rather do it right the first time than to come back and, you know, a year from now and have to do another fifty thousand and another fifty thousand. I just feel, and there may be, and I don't know if Catherine had mentioned, I think she mentioned at the last meeting that you and I had with them, that there may be some grants, possibly for the lighting.
Lighting.
Yeah.
But we did have a company come down who are experts at that and have the engineering capacity to look at all the equipment up in the box, up above, and the lighting and measuring, and so that's where the, it was close to like a hundred and eighty-three thousand?
Hundred and eighty-five.
Hundred and eighty-five thousand, which Shane Kinsman and Sean Maroney were also looking over, but this is what these people do. And it is, you know, they were, well, they weren't shocked, but our equipment definitely is not reflective of anything that's out there now, apparently it's all analog and they're all digital, and so, it was pretty much a total replacement that would hopefully last the next twenty years.
So, would that be something that we would potentially wanna bring to the capital committee as a capital appropriation?
Well, there are two routes that you can go with that. You could go to the capital improvement, which would push that off to FY nineteen, yeah, or use choice money for that, you could use choice money for that.
I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, that's something that the previous two superintendents wanted to do, and it is antiquated, even though it looks nice, but if you rummage around up there, you know, and you know about any of that equipment, it is, you know, dated, and, you know, I'm with Chris and some of the, maybe there's some other members who are upset a little bit about, you know, maintenance and having the town be able to pay for it, even though the charter says so, you know, and I kind of had a fit about it here at this meeting a couple times, you know, but leadership includes taking bull by the horns and doing ourselves, you know?
That's kind of what I stated tonight.
I mean, if we were able to have a revolving fund, we could probably air condition every building over the last twenty years if we, if we had a fund, but we can't, we can't roll over funds. But, you know, if we get the best cost estimates and, you know, do it as diligently as we do everything else, you know, I think it makes the auditorium that much better.
So, part of that then gets back to another issue which has not been resolved with the town in regard to the MOU.
And where we're at with that is I sent back the, what was the final draft with some of your recommended edits, and it last went to Catherine asking for her input. I have not heard back from her on that, but part of that, what was holding that up is the rental income when, that is derived from using school space, which ends up with the DPW, and we want to have a little input with how that money gets spent.
Well, it just seems if we're going to potentially upgrade the auditorium, that, you know, one of the issues, and I know this goes back to when I was on the Board of Selectmen, was in regard to the wear and tear on the equipment, and that the rental, part of the rental cost is supposed to go for paying for that wear and tear of the equipment. And I know, at least right now with the MOU that I saw, that would not be the case, so that's a different issue that needs to be resolved.
And what Catherine had said, and I'm not sure I heard it correctly, but she said that the rental income has to be expended each year, so she was saying like if it gets up to, like, she showed a balance of like seventeen thousand, and we want to re-carpet the auditorium, that showing its wear, but that's not enough to do that, and so she tends to use it on other things, so at some point, that has to be budgeted, and she can do little classrooms with that money, but I don't know if I misunderstood.
No, you understood it correctly, and I, because I was kind of surprised, if you remember, that that did not carry over from year to year. But that's the way they voted it. Pardon me?
She says she has to expend it each year, so there's never a huge, a big enough amount to do something like this.
Some revolving accounts, and I don't, I'd have to go back and look at the laws, you know, off the top of my head, I don't know the exact, some of them have to be closed out at the end of the year to the general fund. I know I had one in Sudbury that had to get closed out to the general fund, so we spent it down, never got closed out. We spent it.
Well, that, that seems like that would be even more impetus for the school to have a revolving account for that maintenance, so that money can be carried forward from year to year, so...
But, but again, you know, if we're gonna, you know, that, I have a feeling, when Sean looked at the hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar figure, he said that this, this looks like, you know, this is the real deal, that everything, where the other ones are replacing this, and, you know, so, I would, you know, so you're not surprised, I feel that it's gonna come back to the hundred and eighty-five thousand or eighty-three thousand dollar number. But, again, similar to the air conditioning, you know, this is my feeling, let's get the right people in to do the right job and do it once, and...
So, are you recommending that we bring in a engineer in order to be able to create an RFP?
I would like, you know, I think I got this on maybe Monday, the hundred and eighty thousand, and I haven't really had time to, to kind of move forward with it, Mr. Chairman. You know, this is not something, with these kind of numbers, you don't wanna rush into it, you wanna make sure you get it right.
I agree.
And so, we're at the preliminary stages in this, and again, you know, that's why I said if you use, if we, if we decide, or if you decide, not me, if you decide to use choice money to upgrade this, it doesn't have to be done in this fiscal year, it can be done in the next fiscal year. And I, I'm gonna report out at the end of the fiscal year, after taking the three hundred and fifty thousand, which is needed to get us through FY eighteen, I'm gonna tell you what the balance is, and, you know, you can decide that's where we wanna put our money.
No, I don't disagree with that. I guess my point is, on something like this, which is clearly outside of our expertise and domain...
Right.
...that we would wanna make sure that we engage someone who has that expertise in order to make sure that we understand exactly what we're asking for and what is needed, particularly if you're talking, I'm calling it two hundred thousand, because...
Thank you.
Hundred and fifty, by the way.
No, 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 no. So, I agree, I agree, Mr. Chairman, and, you know, and just, again, I got this on Monday, this is the preliminary stages, we're not gonna rush into this, we'll make decisions along the way whether we do an RFP, whether we do a straight bid on what we want done. We still have other vendors that are coming in with prices, so we, you know...
But, but I guess my point, Paul, is the vendors can come in and tell us we need this, this, or this. Do you have the expertise to know?
Do I? No, I already, I already said that.
Right.
Well, just like, so Shane Kinsman with Mash BTV, who runs that little, had been, he does have a level of expertise, and so does Sean Maroney in terms of even the brands of equipment that they're listing in this proposal, so, not that they're the only ones, but I rely on Shane.
I'd rely on them, but I would also, and I will get a copy of, that section of the, because Montemoy just built a new high school, they, you know, and they put in all top equipment in there, I can get that portion of the bid specification so that we can take a look at that too. Again, this is a preliminary stage, I'm not, this isn't something that we're gonna push down, you know, in two weeks, we're gonna say, okay, this, this company sounds great, we're gonna just go with them, and then find out afterwards that we didn't get what we should've got for our money. So, I'm not in a hurry, but I'm just kind of throwing it out there, so you can kind of mull on it.
Adjust.
Adjust.
So, if, I mean, call it bad timing or whatever, but obviously we're going through some kind of budget thing there with the town and the schools and all that, and now we're talking about the auditorium, and it was only a couple meetings ago, we were talking about potentially adding fees to things, and don't get me wrong, I understand that, you know, we're trying to improve the building, improve things for, you know, teaching and learning, but when we're talking about the auditorium, which, you know, we were just there last night, and if you peel back the layers, it's not in the best shape, but when you weigh it versus, you know, other things, and what we may have to end up doing next year, maybe two years down the road, you know, is it something we should look at? Absolutely. Is it something that we should really take that serious right now? I mean, just one member on the committee, and I'll venture to say, there's probably at least another one on here that would probably say, not really. I personally wouldn't feel comfortable spending any money, at least, you know, I know you said preliminary, we can do all the research we wanna do and find out what's going on, I have no problem with that.
That's where we are right now.
As far as spending any money, whether it's an engineer or anything, I don't think we should even touch that right now.
No, I think what we, what I'd like to do is try to get some specifications and kind of compare.
Yeah.
I mean, I can do that by reading and kind of, you know, getting Shane involved and Sean involved, and, you know, the lighting piece, you know, sometimes Cape Light Compact has engineers that they will come out and do it for no charge, you know, so, we're gonna use those resources. This is not some, again, I'm trying to, you know, I'm not, this is not something we're gonna rush into. This is not something you're gonna see in September, you know, this is, we're gonna take our time and do it right, and decide whether we wanna do it, but I just, I think that's one of the things that the superintendent wanted me to present tonight, that, you know, maybe, maybe not next year or the year after, I mean, I think we have to meet with the town manager. I don't wanna see user fees, you know my feelings on user fees, I'm against that, that's, I'm against that, you know, I always use the example of my friend Horace Mann, when he started public education, that...
You've been around a while, huh?
Yeah, I've been around a while, that's right.
Seventeen thirty?
Yeah, so, I mean, so he, it's public education.
Yeah.
And, you know, it puts the burdens on who, on ones that can...
Absolutely has to be some deep, deep discussion with the DPW.
You know how I feel, yeah.
So, so I guess just kind of following on to what Chris is saying, and I don't disagree, I can't contemplate that this is something that would get a lot of traction until at least next year. Does it make sense to be expending time and effort at this point then, or should we table that until next fall, when we have more of a sense of where we're at strictly financially, and then spend the time and effort on it?
Well, why don't we, why don't we, again, again, it's in the preliminary stages, let us gather as much information, free information, as we possibly can, and kind of, you know, sit down and, before we get into that stage, you know, just kind of, if we can, let's find out, you know, why is this price a hundred thousand and this one's a hundred and eighty-five thousand, and, you know, try to get some background. Not doing anything, not moving forward with it, not presenting it to the school committee, just kind of gathering as much, you know, I like to get as much knowledge about something before, not that I know a lot about soundboards and stuff, but, you know, I wanna talk to the people that do. I mean, you know, we're, but we're not spending any money on this until...
Doesn't hurt to explore.
Yeah, well, I mean, if we do try to go the route of the capital program, we would need some level of information to be able to do that.
Yeah, so we can, we can, you know, over the next six months, we're not looking to hurry here.
Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there. And that concludes my reports, and I thank you very much.
New buildings or anything?
I was waiting for that.
No.
Oh, I forgot. Stuck my mind. All right, next item in the business is the nurse job description, second read, is in your hand, or in your packet?
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the MPS Social Health Services School Nurse Job Description as presented for a final read.
Second read.
Any questions, comments? None, Scott, how do you rate?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. All right, new Bill Smith, we have some tuition waivers, or we have one tuition waiver?
We have one family requesting that their child be allowed to remain at the Coombe School. AG is currently a first grader, the family has recently moved to Falmouth. The letter does indicate that they're hoping to do school choice next year, however, I believe there is no school choice in second grade, so the letter, if it's approved for the tuition waiver, will reflect that, that option is not available.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant a tuition waiver for the remainder of the current school year for student AG.
Second.
Any discussion? None, Scott?
Yes.
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 You also have two field trip requests for approval, they're out-of-state trips, they are part of Senior Week. One is... One is to Canobie Lake Park in New Hampshire, and the other one is to Providence, Rhode Island. Principal Bala Strachey did share that this senior class has raised enough funding that no senior has to pay for any of the Senior Week activities.
Wow, can I, Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions. So, I was looking online, and Canobie Lake Park, the rate is $38 a person, unless you call on the opening day and get a rate of 26. So, you know, if the, at the rate of 38, at 70 students, that's $2,700 around there. Have that much money? And then they have, so, they're going to take, I know that we've talked about in the past, I don't know what the policy is on this, but, you know, members on this board have talked about quarries for persons that are providing services. Does, would the transportation vendor have to provide a quarry? That's a question I never thought about until today.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Okay, it's going to be Cape Cod Collaborative, because I've arranged the transportation, and they do their own quarries and stories.
Okay, the reason I, there's a private vendor here, listed.
Well, I think that's been canceled.
Okay. And four substitutes needed for 70, possibly seven students, is that, I mean, for teachers for 70 students, is that a typical ratio?
I think there's no students going, because they hired two buses.
So, his question was chaperone ratio.
Yeah.
And, so we would need four substitutes, is that accurate?
Well, they indicated on this form, substitute needed, yes. It's probably, I know it's Patty Riley and Kelly Fina who teach beyond just 12th graders, so that's probably the which, I don't know who the other two chaperones are.
And, so, the students would still arrive at the regular arrival time, and then depart at 10:15? Is that accurate?
Yes.
I'm pretty sure it's a normal school day.
They have their graduation practices.
Oh, yeah, they do, yeah.
They have the agenda, so it says, they come to school at 7:30, 10:15, after their graduation practices, or whatever they're performing. They board the bus to go.
And then, you know, when I first saw this form, I, my, I was, you know, a little stunned, because I've never seen a, a form, field trip, without any curriculum standards listed, you know, and it's, it's the biggest section now. Now, I understand that, you know, I can't remember ever sending, ever sending students to amusement park, but, you know, I understand it's a celebratory type of, type of, end of 12 long years of hard work, but the question is regarding the structured learning time and the 990 hours required by the state. So, will these students meet that requirement, and by missing the day of school? I mean, they're not taking a half day, they're, they're actually leaving before the half day would, you see what I'm saying?
Well, I, I can't answer for sure for Principal Bala Strachey, but I believe all of their academic requirements, including finals, have all been completed prior to this.
And the final question, just on this particular subject, is, you know, Faneuil Hall's a great place, but what, so, oh, I see, I'm confusing with the other one, they're going to return to Mashpee at nine, I see. And, the reason I, when I saw the field trip request, under a field trip request, that also includes, that could also include an optional school program. I mean, I don't know if in the future you want to specify that this is not necessarily curriculum-based trip, but it's maybe an optional school program, so, maybe so, future members don't get alarmed about, you know, so some people might see this and say, you know, that it's coming out of the general fund, that, you know, we're spending $38 a head, you know, that we're, you know, have a private vendor, it just, you know, some, just some, you know, maybe clerical things we could do in the future, that's all.
Yeah, we could indicate on the form whether it was coming, how the funding, what the funding source is.
I think that makes sense, because I had that same question.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I might, on the second, to Skyzone, and that's also included with Fire and Ice, is that accurate? And, now, I've never been, because it's extremely expensive, from what I understand, but I'm going to get there, Paul.
Oh, okay.
All right?
Definitely worth it.
So, approximate mileage, school buses, that, does that word say rented there, over admission price? I don't know what that word says.
School buses. Yeah, I don't know what that means.
Unless the, it's a word describing admission price.
I would assume submission price per person at Skyzone.
Yeah.
And of course, I'm sure that everyone's got their proper, the thing I worry about here is that, isn't that the place where the jumpy's, trampolines, and that kind of place? Is that what it is? I worry about, you know, the insurance waivers, have they all signed the waivers, and, you know, I can't remember, you know, I've sent my own child to a place like this, and I signed a waiver, and I was hesitant about even signing the waiver, because I'd never been to the place. But, are we getting ourselves into a possible insurance thing if someone gets injured, you know? Ductable, everything else we talked about.
I'll double check, but I know they do have to sign the field trip permission form, which does reference...
It's a group rate.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, what was that?
There's a group rate for Canobie Lake Park, so it's really not that much for students, it's 26, according to their website.
It's 26, yeah, if you sign up on the first day. Now, hopefully...
If you go as a group.
Student rates.
I see. And of, of course, can't be wants everyone to come in, I mean, sure they're, you know, it's the first month they're open, so.
I will follow up on that before they go, in terms of...
So, you were saying that...
Our permission slips for all field trips do have wording about, you know, injuries and liabilities on the trip, but I know this is a, you know, particularly physical spot, so I'm sure there's something in place, but I'll double check with the...
Yeah, I mean, I would assume that the teachers on the trip won't let anyone participate in any physical activity unless they, sure they've returned a form.
Right.
What is Skyzone for stuff?
Trampolines.
It's like the lanes, it's trampoline?
Trampoline.
Yeah.
You couldn't get me on there.
To date myself a little bit, we went to Rocky Point Park for senior trip.
We went to Nantucket.
We went to the Museum of Science, which has curriculum involved.
Time will change.
Any other questions in regard to these? Hearing none?
Is that, is that for the bundle, or?
Yeah, for both.
You're going to put it both together?
Yeah.
Seconds, please.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Scott?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes, so, both of them were approved.
Thank you. I have my hand out of the office.
Yeah.
So, next on the agenda is my self-assessment, which I did share in Teach Point. Hopefully, you all received an email that let you know that?
Yes.
Okay, good. But this folder actually has a hard copy, so on the left are just a couple of the evidence pieces that I attached to the Teach Point self-assessment. And then on the right is the, a hard copy of the Teach Point self-assessment using the rubric. And I think the idea was to give the committee a couple of weeks to digest, and then be able to provide your own input to the chairman.
Yeah. Traditionally, we've tried to make sure that we've gotten back information from all of the committee members prior to the elections, so that we can incorporate everyone's feedback. It wouldn't be fair to have someone who's been on the committee for at least a year or longer, not be able to contribute their feedback, and then expect someone who was potentially just elected to be able to express a fair opinion in regard to the superintendent's performance. I believe we have a meeting...
The 10th?
On the 10th. So, I am asking that each committee member review the information. If you have questions, reach out to the superintendent, so that I can get your responses through Teach Point. By, let's see, what's the Friday before?
So, next is one, two, three, four, five.
Fifth, so, next Friday. My next Friday. If you can complete it in Teach Point. That'll give me a couple of days to be able to compile all of the responses, and be in a position that where we can provide feedback on the 10th.
And if you read any of the narrative that I've included, or you want any other pieces of evidence, if you just let, send me an email, I can upload additional evidence if you don't think that it's clear enough, or you would like to see something specific.
Any questions on that? Hearing yet?
Oh, I'll resend it to you, and then, well, actually, I just hit share, so, but I'll send you the link. But if you have any trouble with Teach Point, if you let us know, either Suzie Brooks or Colleen Terrell, primarily Suzie Brooks is who maintains the Teach Point in terms of glitches and all of that, so she would be able to help you.
Probably all the trouble, but... Two hours on the phone, okay, that's all.
Yeah, and I'll probably start looking for them the middle, the middle of next week, to see if anyone has submitted them early, just to pull them down, and start putting them into an Excel form, so that I can tabulate them. As a reminder, all the results get tabulated and combined, so there's, but your comments, which I do encourage, will be individually listed, the scores will be aggregated, though. Okay? That work for you, Scott, also?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. And I think at the 10th, then, we'll have you do a presentation, and then we'll be able to give our response, okay? Excellent. Thank you for putting this together so quickly. Time was flying by, and I realized that...
It's that long ago, we did it the first time.
Yeah. Next item on here, and I had intended to print it off and bring a copy, but I didn't, was the latest and greatest budget for the window project, but basically, it's 10.5 million. There's, I guess, a couple takeaways. There was a call last week, I believe it was, with the state, and I listened in to it, on it, but basically, the work in regard to upgrading the bathrooms to make them compliant with the new regulations in regard to handicap accessible, that is not expenses that the state will reimburse us for. So, we're on the hook for that as a town. You know, there is an article that is going to town meeting on Monday, in regard to the funding request as a debt exclusion for the 10.5 million. But that was kind of, there were some, some smaller things, like replacing some of the ventilation fans, if needed, that would not be covered, but it was the bathrooms that was the big, big net.
Yeah, they won't, they won't cover power washing the exterior brick, but DPW was fine with it, they said they could. And then there was a vestibule onto the gymnasium, that Catherine was going to go back to the town manager to see whether, to remove it totally from the project, it was about 68,000, I believe, or to leave it in place as part of what would be hopefully bonded.
So, that is, is that the vestibule, vestibule, that would allow, then, the town elections to be held without needing to have direct access into the school?
It would allow the double...
The double doors.
Doors, which is what the problem's always been, in terms of if it's cold in there for the workers. And it would also allow maybe other uses of the gym, where they don't have to go through...
Where the, where the doors could be locked on the inside, so that there's no interaction with the students, so.
68,000? Vestibules are getting up there. I guess.
Are we planning to do anything prior to town meeting? Is people coming into the halls with maybe signs, or? I know the, we cannot, we, the school cannot do that as far as supporting any cost of it, so we have the Political Action Committee, they can do it.
They can.
So, are we interested in maybe getting a couple of signs made by the Political Action Committee? Support, support Article 15, or something like that?
You get some really cute question, it kids with some signs on, if that's going to work.
I don't know if that's going to work.
Okay.
Well, members are allowed to speak on the floor on it, and talk about the extended delay of getting it done. I mean, it's going to cost more if we wait.
Correct.
I mean, that's a pretty good argument.
Yeah.
No, and I would encourage, I guess, if members of the committee do want to speak in regard to the article, that they line up and, and take the opportunity. I think I will be, be minding up myself, so. All right.
But nothing else? I'm throwing it out there, I... Obviously not. Overwhelm the support. Pardon?
I'm indifferent, George.
Indifferent. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I'm not sure a sign will make a difference at this, at that point. All right. Any other committee reports?
Health Advisory Committee had a meeting, actually, it was today, and we went over the expert screening, which is going to start, it was voluntary this year. By state directive, the next year, it has to be active in all school districts, and they're going to be starting with grades seven and nine. It's 10 questions. There will be a letter for first read given by Joyce here, which will be going to go to the parents, explaining what the program is. The parents can elect to opt out. Teach, any of the... Each, any of the information that is collected in the interview can go no further. The child, this, this struck me as kind of interesting, the child is going to be giving a form to sign, saying that unless they specifically say so, anything that happens in that conversation goes no further. And the child will sign that. And it will go no further unless the person doing the interview feels that the child is in serious danger or at risk, and then something would happen, but other than that, it will go no further. They found with the districts that have already started this, that what happens, if the initial conversation and the questions are asked, and if the first four questions are negative, they go down to the fifth question, and the fifth question is only asked, you know, to anybody that has answered basically no to the first four, the fifth question is, do you ever ridden in a vehicle with somebody who has been using drugs or is intoxicated, that sort of thing? If they get any positive response in the first four questions, then they'll go through all ten questions with, with the individual concern. What they found in those districts that have tried this, that have, this year, is that it not necessarily that much happens during the first interview, but children will come back at a later period of time and have a discussion, you know, with the nurse, which is they are going to be encouraged to do during this interview process. They, from the history that we have, that they have in the programs that have happened this year, about one in thirty are referred for additional counseling or whatever, treatment centers, whatever might happen. Anyway, Joyce will be here next week, next meeting, I'm sorry, with the draft of the letter that is going to go out to the parents explaining what the program is. They'll also be looking at the CPR and the AED, Automated External Distribulator Policies, they may have to be updated slightly, they should be coming back either at the next meeting or the meeting after that. And from the Town Committee on Drug Abuse and Addiction, we are having a drop-in night. Nurse Shakel and Patty and myself have been attending most of these meetings. This is going to be a, the first attempt at the drop-in night. There's going to be all sorts of outside groups there, Gosnold, High Point, halfway houses, treatment facilities, all sorts of referrals available there. There's no appointment necessary, and this is going to be a monthly process, going to be happening on the first Tuesday of every month, with the exception of July, because that happens through July fourth, so it'll be a week later. And that's it on the meeting. Any requests?
Okay.
I've got one. Mr. Chairman, the Cape Cod Collaborative, you maybe have seen it, I think it was in the Sandwich Enterprise, maybe, but, or it was the Times, I forget which, but, the Cape Cod Collaborative has their Waypoint School, which is on the base. If anyone's ever been out there to this particular location, it's, you know, way past due of being replaced, so the collaborative is trying to find a location and then build a structure, or, at that point, at this point, that's where it is, instead of getting in its existing structure, they're trying to acquire land and then build a structure. I think Mashpee has one student, maybe, at this time at Waypoint, I can't remember the exact number, but it's way overdue, and I, at this point, I believe that it'll be, all the costs will be internally from the collaborative. I don't think there'll be any assessment towards the district, but, or the other districts, but I'll double check, and, you know, I haven't heard that term yet, but I believe that they'll seek a loan, or bond it, or, you know, some, I believe it's a loan. So, that's way past due. The current collaborative is in a public, a barstool, a barstool municipal building, a former school. They, the town, I mean, the collaborative has also looked at the former Wing School, I believe it is, the one downtown in Sandwich, that's an option. So, there's still, and we've given the director of the collaborative ability to go negotiate with, with the private citizens that hold land, and also with the town of Sandwich. So, that's an ongoing thing, it may be, you know, nineteen, or, or near twenty-twenty, that this comes up, but it's something to keep a little eye on, because those Waypoints, those Waypoint students deserve a fine building, just as much as any other student, so, that's all I have this time.
Scott, how many, do you know how many kids are at Waypoint?
Ah, ours, we have one.
One. We have one?
I think it's around sixty or fifty, it's similar to, the numbers, you know, I guess there are too many numbers in here, but I think it's around sixty.
Okay.
That's Cape Cod, this includes, some come, actually, some come from up Cape, too. Yeah, Wayham. And that includes anyone who comes over from Nantucket, the Vineyard, obviously, that's tough for them to do, but, and the kids from the Vineyard of Nantucket who need to go, they, you know, relocate to the Cape and then, you know, move to Waypoint.
And that is an old, dilapidated building. Really?
But I should say the collaborative does a, you know, I asked a question, at one point, does the state or the town or the federal government say you can't operate a school in there, but they do a heck of a job of keeping it maintenance-wise, and, and one of the thing, I guess I can say, is that the director of Waypoint is retiring and does a current search to replace. Larry's been fantastic, and he's done a, he's going to be sorely missed. That's an extremely difficult job, and you've got to give him a lot of credit, and so the next person is going to be, it's going to be a heck of a search to try and find someone to fill the shoes, so, that's going to be ongoing, you know, I can't say when that would be, that person would be in place, and I would assume it would be for July one. I think that's the plan that is currently constituted, but, you know, there's interview processes, and you don't know if, if the top candidates will drop out, you just don't know, so, hopefully by July one.
All right. Yeah, I guess I was initially concerned that here we are potentially talking about Mashpee needing to pay for assessments on another building, and, you know, we're struggling, one with our own, and number two, with Upper Cape Tech, which is still not resolved, and now you add the collaborative into the mix. Unfortunately, you know, the buildings age, and you can put stuff off for so long before you have to ultimately do something, it's just ironic, I guess, that everything is coming to fruition at similar times.
Entities like, all collaboratives, I believe, all collaboratives are allowed to go out and get loans privately, I mean, on their own, they, for example, for buses, if they wanted to go get a loan for all their buses, all their capital improvements, they could do that. So, it's a good financial standing, the collaborative, and we're fortunate, because there's two or three collaboratives in the state that have had serious financial mischievousness, and actually, it caused the state to form more harsh regulations to crack down on any schools or collaborators that might want to have persons that actually divert funds in the wrong, into their own pocket, I guess that's the way I should put it.
Right, but ultimately, you know, the towns will end up contributing towards that, so.
Yeah.
Okay, good, thank you for the update. Anyone else? All right. Hearing nothing else, we're going to be going into executive session for purposes of collective bargaining on Unit A, and also in regard to strategy with respect to litigation, we will not be returning to general session after the end of the executive session.
So moved.
Do you have a second? How do you vote?
Yes.
Yes.
And yes. Thank you.
Thank you.